Okay Sergeant Beyondo, you may start your opening.
Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to today's remote New York City Council hearing on the Committee on Housing and Buildings. At this time, would all panelists please turn on their video? Once again, could all panelists please turn on their video? To minimize disruptions, please place all electronic devices on vibrate or silent mode. If you wish to submit testimony, you may do so at testimonies@council.nyc.gov. Again, that is testimony@council.nyc.gov. Thank you for your cooperation, Chair. We are ready to begin.
Thank you so much. Don't want to gobble us in. Good afternoon. I'm Councilmember Robert Corning. You chair the Committee on Housing and Buildings. Today, the committee will be hearing a bill related to extending the full compliance date of existing site safety training requirements. Pursuant to Local Law 196 of 2017, construction workers are required to complete specific hours of site safety training courses. The deadline to complete these courses was initially May 1st, 2019. However, due to delays in curriculum development and insufficient course provider capacity, the full compliance date was extended to September 1st, 2020 by Local Law 119 of 2019. Unfortunately, the COVID-19 crisis has impacted the ability of construction workers to complete the training requirements. With in-person courses becoming unavailable and a limited number of course providers able to conduct trainings remotely, many construction workers may be unable to complete the training requirements by September 1st. The proposed intro sponsored by the public advocate, Councilmember Munchaka and myself will provide more time by extending the full compliance date to March 1st, 2021. We expect to hear testimony from the Department of Buildings as well as interested members of the public. I'd like to thank my fellow committee members present today. Who do we have? Councilmember Margaret Chin, Councilmember Barry Gudenchik, Councilmember, obviously Carlos Munchaka, who is the sponsor of this, prime sponsor of this bill. Councilmember, I saw Mark Jonai. I believe that's it for now. We are now going to have an opening from the bill sponsor, Councilmember Carlos Munchaka. Can we unmute Carlos? No, unmuted.
I think we're, I think we're good. Thank you. Thank you, Chair. It's been a while since we've spoken. So good that we're talking here about a very important issue. And I also want to give a shout out to Public Advocate Jomani Williams, who's been a fierce advocate along my side in this work. You know, when the pandemic started, I joined others in calling on the governor to halt inessential construction to protect the health of workers who were putting themselves and their families at risk at the height of the pandemic. This is before we had adequate PPE to give to all essential workers and testing was still barely off the ground. It made no sense under those circumstances to put people in harm's way so that developers could build luxury condos and office space when no one was going to live in them or work in them anytime soon. To his credit, the governor listened and the halt was made. But this also meant that the day labors and the union workers and contractors were either unable or rightly cautious about getting site safety training. Since construction returned after we began reopening with proper PPE distribution and testing, the public advocate and I have heard from both unions and the day labor organizations that an extension of the site safety training requirements is needed so that everyone can stay safe and employed. These essential workers deserve every chance to get trained for their safety and for our collective safety in our communities as we recover. So no one could have foreseen this pandemic or the halt to the construction necessitated. But we cannot penalize workers for that, especially when they are engaged in the hardest and arguably the most essential work right now as we recover economically from COVID-19. So I urge all my colleagues to consider these special circumstances that affect the construction industry and keep in mind that many construction workers are immigrant New Yorkers with nearly half of all immigrants unemployed because of this pandemic and we cannot consign more of them to insecurity. So I want to say thank you to the Chair and to all the members on this committee.
I want to take this opportunity before we move on to acknowledge the presence of both Councilmember Fernando Cabrera and Bill Perkins representing all of them. I'm now going to turn it over to our committee council to go over some procedural items.
Thanks, Chair Corning. I'm Austin Branford, Councilor of the State Council's Committee on Housing and Buildings. Before we begin, I want to remind everyone that you'll be on mute until you are called on to testify, at which point you'll be unmuted by one of our staff. I'll be calling on panelists to testify. Please listen for your name to be called as I will be periodically announcing who the next panelist will be. We will first be hearing testimony from the administration, followed by members of the public. During the hearing, if councilmembers would like to ask a question, please use the Zoom raise hand function and I will call on you in order. We will be limiting councilmember questions to three minutes, including responses. We will now turn to testimony from the administration. Today, we'll be hearing from Commissioner LaRaca of the Department of Buildings. I'll now administer the oath. Commissioner, please raise your right hand. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth before this committee? And to respond honestly to councilmember questions?
Yes.
Great. You can begin.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Chair Corning and members of the Committee on Housing and Buildings. I'm Melody LaRaca, Commissioner of the New York City Department of Buildings. I'm pleased to be here to discuss the important issue of construction safety. Keeping our construction sites safe and protecting the public is a top priority for the department. While construction safety continues to be a focus of the department, we're only as good as the industry we regulate. Building owners, contractors, and the construction workforce must do their part in ensuring a climate of safety exists on, at the city's nearly 45,000 active construction sites. I commend construction sites where safety is prioritized and where the laws and regulations that govern construction, including site safety training requirements established by the city through Local Law 196 of 2017 are followed. This historic law requires workers at larger construction sites receive site safety training. The department is committed to holding construction, the construction industry accountable, a goal that we've accomplished by conducting regular proactive inspections at construction sites to identify safety lapses and to ensure that workers are being appropriately trained. I'm happy to report that for the first time in nearly a decade, construction-related injuries decreased over 20% last year compared to the previous year. This is a trend that we're committed to seeing continue. Every worker must go home to their families at the end of their shift and the work they engage in must be safe, not just for their benefit, but for the benefit of every member of the public. This decrease in injuries comes after the launch of our Construction Safety Compliance Unit, which is dedicated to conducting proactive inspections of our larger construction sites. To date, CSC has conducted over 45,000 proactive inspections at nearly 19,000 unique construction sites, issuing 20,000 violations and over 4,000 stop-work orders. Our goal at the department is to continue to improve construction safety and we recognize that site safety training is key to achieving that goal. The decrease in injuries we saw last year can be attributed to our proactive inspections, which include our enforcement of Local Law 196. Currently, workers at many construction sites are required to have 30 hours of safety training and supervisors at those sites are required to have 62 hours of safety training. When fully phased in, Local Law 196 will require workers have 40 hours of safety training. This department will continue to monitor the effectiveness of this law and looks forward to working with this committee to identify opportunities to further improve upon it. Since the enactment of this law, we have conducted extensive outreach to the construction industry, including visiting construction sites to connect directly with the workers who are impacted. We ran an educational advertising campaign that included television, radio, and subway ads. We also released our Site Safety Construction Map, which is an interactive map that workers can use to determine whether a construction site requires site safety training. We will also be hosting a virtual worker safety event next month, which will highlight Local Law 196 and the importance of receiving site safety training. To date, our approved course providers have issued nearly 90,000 site safety training cards and many thousands of OSHA 30 cards to workers, which means that workers are receiving the site safety training required by this law. We are pleased with the compliance that we're seeing on the ground. To date, our inspectors have identified 900 construction sites where approximately 1,500 workers did not have their required training. This resulted in the issuance of approximately 3,000 violations to owners, contractors, and employers for which over 2 million in penalties has already been collected. The legislation before the committee today would extend the date by which construction and demolition workers must complete their 40 hours of training. For many workers who are seeking to satisfy their training requirement, the remaining 10 hours of training includes eight hours of fall prevention. This training is critical to improving site safety as many construction-related injuries and fatalities in recent years have involved worker falls. Last year alone, worker falls accounted for 50% of construction-related fatalities and nearly 25% of injuries. While the department has concerns about extending the deadline for workers to complete their training, we understand that COVID-19 has had an impact on many aspects of our lives, including delaying workers from receiving their training. Due to COVID-19, many of our approved course providers began offering site safety training online. We have nearly, we now have nearly 100 course providers offering site safety training in multiple languages, 49 of which are now offering training online in a format that complies with Local Law 196. Our online course provider map, which is sortable, of course, by language or offering, as well as the type of course and now online training availability, allows workers to find out exactly where training is available that they need. We have no objections to this extension, but I urge our construction workforce not to delay this potentially life-saving training. The sooner this training is completed, the better for both workers and the public. Thank you for the opportunity to testify before you today and I certainly welcome any questions you may have.
Thank you, Commissioner. We'll now turn to any questions from Chair Corning.
Yes, before I ask my questions, I do want to mention the presence of Councilmember Farrah Lewis, Councilmember Helen Rosenbaum, and if I didn't mention before, Councilmember Margaret Chin. Hey Commissioner, how are you?
I'm well, thank you, Councilmember. How are you?
I know that we've had a couple of accidents on sites and I want to thank you for your prompt response to those and for connecting with my office to give us updates on what was happening. I really appreciate that kind of dialogue. It helps the city run smoother. Thank God there were no fatalities. And so it's amazing that we're at this again to make sure that we can prevent that. I mean, in a city that's building exponentially, we have to be diligent on making sure that there is, that the protocols are in place for safety. So I appreciate working with your office to make sure that that's, that's a part of it. I thank the other co-sponsors, Carlos Munchaka, for this great bill as well as Public Advocate Jomani Williams. My first question is, what is the current rate of compliance with the site safety training requirements established by Local Law 196 of 2017?
Thank you, Chair, for that question and thank you for those very kind words. We appreciate the partnership we have immensely. The compliance to date has been very strong from what we're seeing. As I mentioned, our Construction Safety Compliance Unit is primarily the unit tasked with ensuring there is compliance, but we do have every one of our units that walks onto a site also participating in checking to see that there's compliance. To date, we found 919 sites and 1,506 workers on those sites where there was not the required training. So that is of the nearly 19,000 unique sites that Construction Safety Compliance has visited since their inception, that's about a 95% rate of compliance, which is very, very strong.
How many construction workers, still need, I'm sorry. To date, how many construction workers have completed the site safety training requirements? Do we know that number?
So we are aware of our providers, of which there are nearly 100, have issued about 88,500 site safety training cards to workers. We know that the Department of, the State Department of Labor estimates about 150,000 workers, which includes individuals who do not, I want to emphasize this, who do not engage in construction activities on-site. We also know the universe for required, where training is required is about 6,500 sites at this point. So again, the issuance of the site safety training cards is very high, as well as when you look even at the supervisory level, those who have achieved supervisory training, which is the 62 hours, is very high. So we're seeing, I think broadly speaking, that plus the OSHA 30s that are administered both by our providers as well as other OSHA-approved providers has been very high.
So some of us, especially as sponsors, believe that this bill is incredibly important. The reason I asked for that number because I really basically wanted to see between how many people who have actually received it, how many people are, you know, how many people have not received it? So we could gauge the importance of the bill. It's hard to do that without having those numbers, obviously. I mean, I think generally, like you said, that there's a large number, but getting that number and then understanding the number that's still outstanding kind of helps us understand the importance of extending this and, but not continuing to extend it in perpetuity. So if at some point you could get those numbers to this committee, it would be greatly appreciated.
Absolutely.
In an effort to make sure that we're not just playing the extension, extension game and that there really is an end to it. And that we can at some point begin to feel safer as a city due to compliance.
Agreed and we'll be, we'll be sure to get to the committee today, the numbers.
One of the questions, what is being added is now, are there enough course providers? We initially extended it because of the amount of course providers and those kinds of things. So are there enough course providers to accommodate all the remaining construction workers? Now, I know we don't know that number, but are there enough, in your estimation, are there enough course providers qualified to administer the site safety training?
We believe there are. At this point to date, we have 98 course providers that are offering site safety training. And again, we're providing workers and members of the public exactly who those providers are, what courses they offer, what languages they offer it in, and whether they have online capabilities or not. So we believe at this point there is sufficient capacity.
So this pandemic has changed the way that we do business. We're actually on a Zoom call, which no one would have ever thought six months ago, we'd be conducting hearings of the New York City Council and advocating for bills such as this remotely. So it's a great concern of how many course providers are currently able to conduct trainings remotely?
Yeah, we certainly, it's an understatement of our lifetime to say that nobody could have planned for this pandemic. Certainly, I didn't, never see it coming. So, but I will say, Local Law 196, when passed, did allow for providers to offer online training. If you look back in history, at the beginning of April of just this year, we had one provider offering online courses. To date, we have 49 providers, so 49 of the 98. So again, in the vein of capacity, we understand, you know, we had to do it at the department, transition our services, our business model from a very much in-person, very much in paper, to very much online, not in person. And we've seen that as well in our providers. So we're very confident at the number that are offering those courses right now.
So I'm very proud, obviously, of the New York City Council, having, being able to pivot and shift and not stopping the business of this city by being hampered, not being able to operate remotely. So that's a big shout out to everybody who's at the back end of this, making sure that these hearings can happen effectively and efficiently. What percentage would you say does that 49 provider, what percentage of that 49 provider number make up of the overall number of providers?
Sure, it's about half. So we have 49 right now that are providing some online courses. And to date, we have 98 total providers who are eligible to offer the courses, in person or otherwise. So it's about half.
So are we encouraging those other providers, the other half of the providers, to move to an online model or a hybrid model to meet the needs of this site safety training compliant?
Certainly. And there's never been a, during the pandemic, there's never been a moment where the department has hesitated if we've heard from providers who have questions or concerns on whether they can go online.
Thank you. I want to acknowledge before my last question, the presence of Councilmember Colina Rivera. You know, obviously the devil's always in the details in our business, right? And by that, I mean compliance, as well as the ability to audit. How is the Department of Buildings conducting audits of online course providers in particular?
Yeah, so we have a group of individuals who are set out with and tasked with ensuring that we audit the course providers themselves, the organization, as well as the individual courses that are being provided. So pre-COVID, we were doing that obviously a little different. We were doing that in person. We had our investigators attend the classes to ensure that the quality of the course was as specified and on the backend, on the office side, that the paperwork all made sense. We're still doing that. The providers have very specific requirements about what type of online course they're allowed to do. So they can't do a PowerPoint where you know, you can't have live in-person proctoring. So we are able to audit those as well to ensure that it is meeting the specifications of the law.
So I have a few more questions, but I want to make sure that my colleagues get an opportunity to ask their questions. I'm going to turn it back over to Austin. So we can process of going through the stack of our colleagues. I'm sure that Carlos Munchaka has some questions.
Sure, I'll now call on councilmembers to ask questions in the order that they use the Zoom raise hand function. So councilmembers, please keep your questions to three minutes, including responses. If there is a second round of questioning, councilmember questions will be limited to two minutes. A sergeant in arms will keep a timer and let you know when your time is up. So we'll start with Councilmember Chin, followed by Councilmember Munchaka.
Your time will begin now.
Thank you. Hi Commissioners, great to see you. I just want some clarification. When you were talking about the number of hours for the training for workers, so is it 30 hours or 40 hours?
So currently, the requirement is for 30 hours. That date passed on December 1st, that was the date where that requirement went into effect. The requirement for the additional 10 hours is coming up on September 1st. And so we are talking about that delta period of those additional 10 hours.
So the additional 10 hour is for all the construction workers? So that's a huge number.
It's an additional 10 hours for workers who are working on a site as specified by the law. So broadly speaking, any site that requires a construction super, a site safety coordinator, or a site safety manager, so again, very broadly, think of a four-story building or above, an enlargement to an existing building. We're not talking about one, two, three family homes. So that today is about 6,500 sites across the city where this requirement is in place. So it is specific to the site.
And so how many workers have been trained for that extra 10 hours? You have those statistics?
So we have, we do know that to date, our providers have issued about 88,500 site safety cards and that runs the gamut that was, of the cards that were issued. Include outside of that number, and again, because we are operating under the 30-hour requirement right now. So outside of that 88,500 is, you know, tens of thousands of OSHA 30 cards that were issued by our providers, who may also be OSHA authorized or separately by just an OSHA-approved provider.
Yeah, I think it'll be, it'll be good if you can provide the breakdown statistic to the committee so that we can better understand, you know, in terms of the needs. And my last question is that, do you have a break, can we have a breakdown on in terms of the language of the, of the workers that got the certificate? You know, like how many took the course in Spanish? How many took the course in Chinese? How many took the course in English? I think that will also be helpful.
Certainly. I don't have the number, the breakdown of courses that were taken in the respective languages, but we do ensure that our providers are offering courses in multiple languages. And across the board, we have 11 languages where courses are provided in. So
Yeah, maybe the provider can give us, can give you the information. I think it'll be good for us to really see in terms of what the language needs are.
Happily, yes.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
We will now hear from Councilmember Munchaka.
Hi Commissioner LaRaca, good to see you.
Hi Councilmember.
And I also just want to say thank you for your leadership in this role and working with you is going to be just not only important, but I think critical in times of COVID and what the changes that are happening, hence the bill that we're listening to today. And I guess my questions are really about the relationship with you and the day labors. And if there's anything you can tell us a little bit about, about how as COVID has impacted our city, but also specifically in construction, what has you and your office done to really, really reach out and get a better sense about what's happening? Any report backs about what that looks like in meetings? I want to get a sense of flavor. And really, the second piece is how can we work together as post this law passing to ensure that we get to the goals that you just stated in your opening statement?
Thank you, Councilmember, for those. So very important part of our universe here at the Department of Buildings is obviously working with organizations that represent day labors. That is 100% a very large constituency of ours. And we do believe that the Department of Buildings, that our constituency includes workers, period. So they make up a very important constituent base for us. Very early on, when I took over at Department of Buildings, I did meet with a number of organizations that represent day labors. A very good conversation. I feel like we took away some very good homework that the department could be doing. Incidentally, we did have a conversation, I want to say about a week or so ago, with a group, again, representing day labors on how to advance some of the goals that they had that we share. So some of those goals are, and we have to admittedly, we must do more of this, is getting our staff into the field in a non-punitive way, in a educational way. So we did that last year around cold form steel. If you remember, there was an incident in the Bronx where we unfortunately had a fatality and that site was employing cold form steel. We felt it very important at that time and we continue to feel very strongly about this, that we have to get directly to the worker. And we have to do that because we need to arm them with information. If we believe, and I think this is a true statement, that the Department of Buildings is the definitive source when it comes to how to build correctly and safely, then we have to do that directly to workers. So you saw, you saw in response to that, DOB staff going into the field. We had produced information in multiple languages to hand out to workers on what to be aware of. Again, this is not punitive, not about the worker individually, more about making sure that they have awareness when they walk on a site of things that could be potentially harmful to them. In this particular case, it was cold forms steel. So we have to do more of that, 100%, and you'll see more of that. We are working later, excuse me, next month, not later, next month, as part of a series that we do annually. This year is the first year where we're going to do events focused exclusively on workers. Meaning, I don't want the audience to be architects and engineers, you know, we're not going to turn anybody away, but the purpose is to make sure that we have workers. So to your second question, what I think would be helpful, and I will make my staff available any time of the day. I will make myself available. I will make myself available any time of the day, any day of the week, is to organize workers. I want to do more workers, less train the trainers. And making sure my staff, my experts can talk directly to workers about what to look out for, what they see, and important, how to stay safe, right? If your boss on a job site is telling you to do something, don't.
Yeah.
You know, if it's, if it's one of these things, don't do that. You call the department right away. There's no fear in that, right? It's an anonymous call, three-one-one, and we come out immediately. We need to break down those barriers. So I think the biggest ask that I would have is help make sure that those connections can happen. Because again, I will make my staff available to do as many meetings as often on a re- reoccurring basis to make sure we're talking directly to the workers who, I believe strongly, need somebody to be their voice.
Yeah.
And we believe very much in a culture of safety. We believe it's our job to be both the stick and the carrot in making sure that workers who walk onto a site go home safely to their family. So we are ready, willing, and able.
Thank you, Commissioner. My time is up, but I just want to say thank you for that commitment that you gave the second you became the Commissioner. And I think day labor organizations are listening to us now, and I want to make sure that we follow up and and take you up on that, and you've already done that. So let's keep making that culture of safety real in every corner, no matter immigration status. When we think about census, COVID testing, all the things that are, I think, presented to us right now as a city, this is one place that we have to get it right too, and that's about trust. So thank you.
Thank you.
We'll now turn back to Chair Cornegy for any final questions before turning to public testimony.
No, I've asked my questions. Thank you, Commissioner, for being frank and following the protocols. Thank you, everybody who's had questions. I'm good. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair.
So we'll now turn to testimony from members of the public. I'd like to remind everyone that unlike our in-person council hearings, we'll be calling on individuals one by one to testify. Once your name is called, a member of our staff will unmute you, and the sergeant-at-arms will set the timer and announce you may begin. Your testimony will be limited to two minutes. We will first be hearing from Action OSH Co-op, followed by Alba Villa.
Your time will begin now.
Hi, can everybody hear me? Hi, great. Thank you all so much for having me today. I want to say thank you to the committee and all the councilmembers here, some who I have known and been working alongside through different positions, through the worker cooperative world, as well as the day labor organizing world. And I want to give a thank you to Urban Upbound, who invited us today to be nice here on the call with us as well. And then all the worker centers, NICE, and Workers Justice Project, seeing NIKOSH, and other cooperatives as well. Ultimately, you know, we'll submit our written testimony, but we wanted to come and voice our concerns here today with the deadline as it stands. Our co-op, we are a worker cooperative, immigrant worker-owned cooperative dedicated to health and safety training. We're OSHA trainers. We collaborate with service providers to provide the SST training as well. Since the rollout of the local law, one ninety-six in twenty eighteen, we've conducted thousands of hours of OSHA thirty training and SST ten-hour trainings, which amount to tens of thousands of contact hours with New York City construction workers. And, you know, as difficult as it is to name the specific number of workers we're referring to here when we're talking about how many people need trainings, it's understanding that we're talking about, you know, tens of millions of contact hours that need to get done in order to achieve forty-plus hours for every single construction worker that this applies to in New York City. To be able to do that also means access. So a lot of the communities, we provide our own trainings. We work with private service providers to support their training programs. We work with the worker centers and community-based organizations to execute their service provision as well. And ultimately, even with as many hours that we have all been working to achieve these goals set out by the department, there are still countless workers, especially in low-income immigrant and black communities, who are struggling to find access to these trainings, especially affordably. The truth is, a lot of employers are not paying for this. That's how, a lot of how the industry is designed. Any workers that aren't getting provided this on job and by their employer are struggling to get these trainings, and that means they'll be out of a job. So we urge the extension. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now hear from Alba Villa, followed by Annie Garneva.
Your time will begin.
Hi, everyone. I'd like to thank everyone for the opportunity to be here with you all and for proposing this. NMCR has been around since nineteen eighty-two, and we've been committed to expanding access to critical legal services and social services for communities of color, particularly for immigrants. Can everyone hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Sorry. Most of the people we serve are from low-income workers from Caribbean and Latin America, and increasingly from Africa and the Middle East. In the almost forty years since our founding, NMCR has always provided a holistic approach to service delivery. So when our immigrants, our immigrant clients came to our office for services, many of them were day laborers, they started coming to us with reports of employer abuse, workplace justice injuries, deaths in their families, wage theft, and discrimination. And we knew how to respond. About three years ago, with, in large part due to funding from the Day Labor Workforce Initiative, NMCR opened the first day labor center in Manhattan as part of the DLWI Coalition. Now we're a fully operating worker center with a physical space for workers to meet an effective hiring hall, a cadre of organizers, teachers, and lawyers committed to dispatching to training workers, fighting wage theft and abuse by negotiating fair contracts with employers and building our local economy. I'm proud to be part of the DLWI Coalition and all the employers and building our local economy. And I'm proud of how far we've come. While NMCR was not included in the initial SST funding pool, we have been conducting SST training in Spanish to hundreds of workers a year and have a list of hundreds of workers on a waitlist who desperately need access to training. Through our work, we've been able to gain a glimpse of what transformational change can look like and why we need that change to eliminate disparities within our communities. And we've demonstrated that worker centers in particular can move the needle in the right direction, one, so that we're not simply just sewing wounds and putting Band-Aids, but really weaving justice into our social fabric. Before COVID nineteen, NMCR typically served eight thousand families a year through one-on-one legal consultations, worker center services, and educational programs. And during the pandemic, we've gotten as much as four thousand calls in one month in terms of calls for help. So it's exposed many of our systematic failures in our country and in our city and the disparity that exists with communities of color. I was also appointed to Mayor Bill de Blasio's Labor and Workforce Sector Advisory Council. And in discussing alongside fellow leaders how to rebuild a fairer post-COVID nineteen city, one thing was clear, and that the only way forward is to put worker centers at the forefront of leading that effort. So as New York City continues to reopen, and we reflect on how we can address the disparate impact of COVID nineteen on communities of colors, we cannot deepen the levels of despair by failing to extend SST compliance deadline properly and funding a grassroots organization that serves frontline workers who have worked long hours under grueling and dangerous circumstances to help rebuild their city. NMCR has met the challenges of the COVID nineteen pandemic by rapidly adapting programs to meet the needs of our clients and the communities that we serve. We never run a pantry. We don't have fun for food, and yet, with support of the community, we find a way to each week distribute two hundred meals in grocery boxes. We stayed open, like all the other worker centers, continued dispatching, distributed PPE to workers, ran worker meetings, and distributed more than eight hundred thousand in cash assistance. In mid-March, we had a list of nine hundred and sixty-five workers registered on a waiting list for SST. And that doesn't take into account the thousands of calls that our worker center has received in the last five months seeking access to training. NMCR's Worker Center supports a bill extending SST compliance deadline and respectfully requests that, as only Manhattan Worker Center, we have access to the funds to train the hundreds of workers that are desperately waiting for a chance to rebuild their lives and help us rebuild this city. Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you. I hope you submitted your testimony in writing, correct? Thank you.
Thank you. Well, next here from Annie Garneva, followed by Blanca Palameque.
Your time will begin now.
Hello. Good afternoon, and thank you, Chairman Cornegy and members of the council for giving members of the public the chance to testify on this critical issue, especially during this time of heightened public health and economic challenges. My name is Annie Garneva, and I'm the Director of Communications and Member Services of the New York City Employment and Training Coalition. The Coalition supports the workforce development community to ensure that every New Yorker has access to the skills, training, and education needed to thrive in the local economy, and that every business is able to maintain a highly skilled workforce. Today, the Coalition is here to give voice to the shared concerns of some of the city's nonprofit workforce development providers that make up our membership, particularly those that are supporting historically marginalized New Yorkers to access opportunities within the construction sector. These include members Building Skills New York, the Hope Program, the Osborne Association, Opportunities for a Better Tomorrow, and Strive, some of which you'll be hearing from later today. Today, we are voicing our support for this bill and extension of the full compliance date for local law one ninety-six from September first, twenty twenty, to March first, twenty twenty-one. We believe this extension is necessary to both ensure the spirit of the law, which has established stronger safety requirements and skills among New York City's construction workers, and to make sure that economic hardships created by the ongoing pandemic are not exacerbated through this regulation. The three-month shutdown that took place due to COVID impacted all industries tremendously, and especially face-to-face industries such as the construction sector. This in turn has meant that job losses have been hardest hit, hardest felt among low-wage workers, people of color, immigrants, young workers, and less educated workers, all of whom were already facing outsized inequities and historic and systemic marginalization and disinvestment prior to the pandemic. And though the construction sector is beginning to rebound, it's a drop in the bucket relative to pre-COVID levels. As of June, the construction sector is still experiencing a twenty percent decline in overall jobs. Again, I emphasize that marginalized communities are faced and continue to face the highest rate of displacement. Most relevant to the proposed bill being discussed today, just one last point, and then I'll submit my piece in writing, is that part of the disparity is faced due to the digital disconnections that we've talked about today, and among our membership, we find about a thirteen percent digital disconnection rate amongst clients and amongst smaller programs, such as the ones that I mentioned earlier, that goes up to thirty-six percent. So there are a lot of people that are not being captured into the data that was previously referenced, and that would really help get those people laptops, online Wi-Fi access beyond just having accessibility to the extension of the deadline. Thank you, and I look forward to listening to the rest of the testimony.
Thanks, Annie. We'll now hear from Blanca Palameque, followed by Charlene Obernauer.
Okay. Buenas tardes. Este, mi primer idioma es el español. Entonces, espero que alguien me pueda ayudar a traducir o voy a empezar. Estoy aquí representando a la Cooperativa de entrenadores de salud y seguridad OSHA Solutions. Y yo vengo hoy testifico en apoyo a la extensión del plazo de capacitación de la tarjeta SST. Porque esto evitaría que muchos trabajadores, especialmente de la comunidad latina, quedarían sin empleo. Muchos de ellos también están pasando lo que es esto de la pandemia. Entonces están más vulnerables y por eso es que yo estoy acá para decirles que si fueran pues pudieran ustedes tener esa importancia de lo que es la extensión de la OSHA, perdón, de la tarjeta SST. Gracias por atenderme y espero pues que consideren esta extensión. Muchas gracias.
Thank you. We'll now hear from Charlene Obernauer, followed by Daniel Castro.
Your time will begin.
Hi, my name is Charlene Obernauer. I'm the Executive Director of NIKOSH, the New York Committee for Occupational Safety and Health. And we were one of the advocates behind local law one ninety-six. We strongly believe that training reduces the number of injuries and fatalities that workers experience on the job. And we strongly believe that local law one ninety-six is essential for keeping New Yorkers safe. I want to thank the committee for having me here today. I want to thank Carlos Manchaca, Councilmember Carlos Manchaca, as well as the public advocate Jomani Williams for their advocacy on this issue. And we support extending the deadline. The reason why we support it isn't because, you know, we just want the deadline to be extended into infinity, but because realistically, the pandemic made it impossible for us to train workers. We typically train fifteen thousand workers in any given year, and all of those trainings that we had planned were delayed after March thirteenth, when we no longer could do in-person trainings. Now we've started to do online trainings. We actually have our first SST online training happening tomorrow. But as you can see, it's been four months since we were able to really start up online. Also, there are workers who are not going to be able to have the necessary technology or skill set to be able to take the training online, so that provides another reason for extending the deadline. Overall, we think that workers need to be able to access the training in order for this deadline to be extended. So we're in support of all of the day laborers who have been, all of the day labor organizations who've been given funding to provide trainings for marginalized communities. And we think it's essential that these communities continue to have funding to be trained because the training itself is important. And the only way that workers are going to get trained is if the communities themselves are able to offer those trainings. So thank you so much. In conclusion, Charlene at NIKOSH, we support extending the deadline. Thank you.
Thanks, Charlene. We'll now hear from Daniel Castro, followed by David Mead.
Your time will begin.
Good afternoon, everybody. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today before the council. I'm excited to be here. I work as an employment specialist with the whole program. We serve members of low-income communities and at-risk youth and individuals who come in contact with the criminal justice system in the Bronx and all five boroughs. And, you know, as the city has been impacted by COVID shutdowns and service changes, many job training services like ours have had to pivot to more virtual and remote trainings. And this has presented a new set of technical challenges to navigate. As you know, from a ground worker's perspective, many of the New Yorkers we work with don't have adequate access to internet tech, you know, so phones, laptops, and digital literacy skills required to join these virtual trainings sometimes. So we've really been working tirelessly to do outreach to our community, to get them connected to these trainings. Just doing a little more hand-holding to make sure that folks are, you know, once they're able to join the trainings, that they're able to complete and get connected to work. So we are totally in support of the deadline extension, or allow us more time to get our workers trained adequately. And that's it. Thank you for your time.
Daniel, next up is David Mead, followed by Lechia Gwala.
Your time will begin.
Well, good afternoon, everyone. My name is Dave Mead. I'm the Executive Director of Building Skills New York. We're a nonprofit construction workforce development organization. We connect underemployed New Yorkers to construction jobs around New York City. We're working with and work with prospective participants in underemployed communities to connect them with job opportunities and training. To that end, we're proud that all the Building Skills participants we work with are both New York City residents, and nearly a hundred percent are men and women of color. As New York continues on the path to economic recovery, construction industry is going to be at the heart of citywide efforts to generate and sustain good, safe jobs for thousands of local residents. As you know, COVID nineteen shut down most activities in New York City for approximately three months. And such shutdowns have made it difficult for workers to obtain the additional ten hours of site safety training required for all construction workers by September first, under local law one ninety-six. And even now, the vast majority of them may still have difficulty obtaining the necessary training, since many courses are still online-only, and many workers may lack the technology to meaningfully access the internet. We estimate that about the eight hundred people that we've accepted into our construction workforce program this year, really less than ten percent have the additional ten hours of site safety training that are going to be required to gain and maintain a construction job by September first. And we think similar impacts are being felt, as you've heard earlier, by other workforce development organizations across the city. And as a leader of workforce development group that works with the underserved, I think seeking pathways out of poverty, we know this is an outcome we cannot afford. I think at a moment like this, it's important to remember that, you know, city officials have previously extended deadlines or related to local law one ninety-six in order to access such cases as this. Since it's widely understood that reaching the deadline without adequate training resources in place would end up leaving thousands of construction workers jobless. So we strongly urge you to extend the current September one deadline. You know, that a meaningful extension is going to allow organizations the ability to work with individuals who are still seeking their certification. And again, your action on the issue is going to enable New York's economic recovery moving and protecting jobs of thousands of construction workers who deserve support during this difficult time. Thank you for allowing me to provide comments today.
Thanks, David. Next, we'll hear from Lechia Gwala. Thanks, David. Next, we'll hear from Lechia Walpa, followed by Oswaldo Mendoza, with translation by Manuel Castro.
Your time will begin.
Hi.
Just one moment.
Can you hear me now? Yeah, sorry. So my name is Lechia Walpa from the Worker Justice Project, a essential organization that has been on the front lines providing safety training to day laborers and immigrant construction workers in New York City. Since the implementation of Local Law 196, we have continuously expressed our concerns about New York City's capacity to train a large, growing immigrant workforce under a online-based model. Despite many attempts to train the entire workforce, New York City has not managed to train all workers in the industry because of the lack of training and infrastructure. The pandemic has not only impacted the lives of workers, but has created the inability for many to get access to training and job opportunities. To get a sense of this reality and the importance of this extension, I'm just going to let briefly, less than a minute, actually, one of our members speak, Sergio Ace.
Muy buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Sergio Ace. Soy de Guatemala y miembro del Proyecto Justicia Laboral, y estoy acá hoy día abocando para que se extienda la ley 196, para que nuestra gente, nuestra comunidad, se entrene, nuestra comunidad se capacite. Como ven, COVID-19 hizo un daño grande a muchos en su economía, y muchos no tienen acceso a internet para poder también entrenarse en línea, y muchos también ahora que han perdido sus trabajos en restaurantes andan buscando medios para poder capacitarse, para poder sobrevivir y querer involucrarse en lo que es la construcción. Ellos no tienen el medio ahora y están como en la nada, pues esperamos que nos ayuden y se los agradecería de parte de mi comunidad. Gracias.
As Sergio explained, you know, one of the biggest challenges Sergio just explained is that many workers have not been able to work, therefore, many don't have the technology nor the resources to get trained online. And this is one of the reasons we're asking for the extension of Local Law 196 and the ability to host a small online site, a small SST classes onsite. We hope to count with your support. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Lechia. We'll now hear from Oswaldo Mendoza, with translation by Manuel Castro, followed by Sean Brennan.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Manuel Castro. I'm going to be interpreting for Oswaldo Mendoza, a member of the organization. I just want to introduce ourselves real quick. I'm the Executive Director of the organization. We are a day labor center located in Jackson Heights, Queens. And so for the past 20 years, we have been working very closely with day laborers and immigrant workers, mostly recently arrived immigrants in New York City. And we've never faced the kind of challenges that we're facing right now. So many of our community members were directly impacted by this pandemic. Many unfortunately have died and have been sick. And so we've been working, as Alva mentioned earlier, to support our communities. But recently, we held a vigil to remember the Mexican immigrant worker who died soon after the industry opened a few weeks ago at a construction site. And with several family members or workers who had previously died came with us. And so it's clear that we have to pay attention at construction, health, and safety. And I don't think anyone else wants training and safety for our members or for this community more than we do. It's our community has the largest rates of death and injury in construction sites, but we got to get this right. Often, the lack of these cards, whether it's SST or OSHA, is used by employers as a way to lower wages, as a way to push them further down into the shadows, and as a way to leverage their power over them. So we got to get this right, and for that reason, we support the extension. So right now, Oswaldo Mendoza, who has been a longtime member of the organization, will share a few words with us.
Gracias, Manuel. Bueno, como ya Manuel lo dijo, mi nombre es Oswaldo Mendoza. Yo soy miembro de NICE ya hace muchos años y entrenador certificado por OSHA. Actualmente estamos proporcionando cursos de manera virtual entre semana y en fines de semana debido a la alta demanda de miembros de la comunidad. En este caso, los jornaleros que trabajan en la industria de la construcción. Mas, sin embargo, no es suficiente. Sabemos de primera mano los mismos trabajadores a los que entrenamos de las necesidades a las que se enfrentan todos los días, como por ejemplo, la falta de entrenamientos en seguridad y salud a bajo costo, ya que debido a la fecha tan próxima, los precios se han disparado, y por lo mismo están siendo víctimas de abusos y en muchas ocasiones de fraudes, tarjetas falsas. Otro fraude o otra exposición de estos trabajadores es cuando varios o muchos trabajadores están tomando las clases de forma presencial sin los protocolos adecuados, digamos la distancia social. Organizaciones como NICE, actualmente estamos dando el entrenamiento de SST 10 horas, pero recordemos que son más de 60,000 trabajadores a los que debemos entrenar. Y no solo el número es un impedimento, sino el nuevo mundo al que nos estamos enfrentando debido a esta pandemia. Cabe mencionar que para muchas de estas personas, gente de nuestra comunidad que trabaja en la construcción, una industria de trabajo físico, trabajo con las manos, hemos encontrado muchos casos donde nunca habían tenido interacción con una computadora. Así que esto se convierte en un doble reto, un doble esfuerzo, ya que se les tiene que introducir a esta tecnología nueva para ellos. Así que hoy estoy aquí en nombre de todos mis hermanos, de todos mis compañeros, pidiendo no solo se amplíe esta fecha límite, sino se provean más fondos para poder cumplir con el cometido y de esta forma ayudar a los trabajadores de la construcción a llevar el sustento a sus casas en tiempos tan difíciles. Muchas gracias por el espacio y la oportunidad.
Now provide a quick summary. My name is Oswaldo Mendoza. I'm a member of NICE. I'm also certified OSHA instructor. At the organization, at NICE, we provide OSHA training or SST training day in and day out, you know, seven days a week. Every day, we have been trained, but this is not enough. The demand because of the upcoming deadline is incredibly high. And, you know, in large part because employers are not providing these trainings for workers. They depend on organizations like NICE where they will provide the training free of cost. We also have seen an increase in the prices of these trainings by private providers. And unfortunately, we're starting to see fraud, the selling of these fake cards on the street because of the upcoming deadline. Our organization is doing everything possible to provide training for thousands of workers, but the world has changed due to the pandemic. Unfortunately, we now have to do all the trainings online. But as you probably know, a lot of these workers spend most of their days at day labor stops or at their construction sites, and they don't spend time in front of the computer or understand, you know, how to interact with the computers. So there's double the challenge now, not only having to provide access to this training, but also with computer literacy. So that's why I'm here, you know, to represent my brothers and sisters in the construction industry and my colleagues at NICE to ask for an extension of the SST deadline so that we can meet our goals and truly support the workers in this industry. Thank you so much.
Thank you. We will now hear from Sean Brennan, followed by Tamina Brohi.
Your time will begin.
Good afternoon, this is Chairman and members of the committee. My name is Sean Brennan. I'm the Training Director for Mason Tenders Training Fund. I also serve as an appointed member of the Site Safety Training Task Force convened in accordance with Local Law 196. Today, however, I come before the committee representing the Building and Construction Trades Council of Greater New York as Chairman of its Health and Safety Committee. A year ago, no one could have predicted this pandemic or the catastrophic effect that COVID-19 would have on our nation. New York City in particular has been severely impacted by the health and economic consequences that this crisis has borne on us all. Vibrant industries, including the construction industry, were brought to their knees as the city unfortunately but wisely paused and sheltered in place to reduce the spread of the disease and curtail the virus impact. The pause eliminated for a significant period of time any in-person gatherings of more than just a handful of people. As a result, the construction industry's training providers across the city shuttered their doors and searched for answers that might permit training to continue in new ways. Some found a workable solution in the growing field of video conferencing platforms like the very one we're using for this hearing today. While certainly practicable, these virtual programs do not, however, present a seamless transition from our traditional training methods. A certain level of technical expertise is required for both the provider and the end user for the platform to function in an acceptable way for training purposes. Even those of us who have incorporated virtual training into our programs needed weeks to train our instructional staff in its use, with essentially all staff working from home. New ways to administer these programs and to keep records necessary needed to be developed. And all of this needed to reach a standard that would meet the Department of Buildings' approval. And then there's the cost. In order to provide this service, our program at the Mason Tenders has already spent in excess of $10,000. And if we continue to use it, we'll have a recurring annual cost of and exceeding $12,000.
Time's up.
I believe these issues, particularly the cost, caused a number of the training providers in the city to resist implementing this technology. Capacity has always been the guiding metric to use to determine the suitable compliance state regarding Local Law 196. In June, three months into the pandemic, a full two-thirds of the approved providers were not providing online training. In fact, to this day, more than half of the city's providers have either elected to forego visual instruction or virtual instruction altogether or have failed to meet satisfactory standard for DLB approval. Failure to recognize the critical impact this pandemic's imposed on the city's construction workers' ability to complete their training would be devastating. If the September 1 compliance date is not deferred to a later date, thousands and thousands of workers will be forced out of work at a time when employment is absolutely essential to keep working families housed and fed. This simply cannot be allowed to happen to New York's hard-working men and women in construction. Therefore, on behalf of Gary LaBarbara and the Building and Construction Trades Council of Greater New York, I wholeheartedly support this amendment to move the final compliance date for Local Law 196 to March 1st, 2021. Thank you, and I'll happily answer any questions.
Thank you. We'll now hear from Tamina Brohi, followed by Yastinha Mata.
Hello, folks. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Your time will begin now.
Good afternoon. Thank you for the opportunity to testify in favor of extent.
You're breaking up a little bit.
Sorry. Good afternoon, folks. Is that better? Hello? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. My name is Tamina. I am the Worker Cooperative Program Manager at Urban Uptown. And Urban Uptown is a community-based organization dedicated to breaking cycles of poverty for New York City public housing residents and other low-income New Yorkers. To that end, we incubate worker-owned businesses to provide job security and generate wealth. Two of the cooperative businesses that we closely support are OSHA Solutions, and we witnessed firsthand the economic impact of COVID-19 on the businesses and on construction industry workers. Many community workers, community members who work in the construction industry are threatened with imminent job losses if they are unable to complete the additional training required, and trainers are holding smaller-than-normal classes due to social distancing guideline and need more time to finish to implement the trainings. Therefore, I'm testifying today in support of extending the SST deadline, which will prevent job losses for thousands of construction workers across the city, many already in tough financial situations due to the COVID-19 pandemic. We know that there has been a precedent of extending training deadlines and the training deadlines in the past in order to prevent massive job losses. And we hope that the council and the committee will earnestly consider the importance of extending this deadline. In this very unique situation, we find ourselves in the city in a global pandemic. Thank you for your time, and I'll submit a written testimony as well.
I'm here from Yastinha Mata.
Your time will begin.
When the pandemic hit, it was organizations that formed part of day labor workforce initiatives that kept its doors open to ensure that workers were being protected. La Culmena, which is based on St. Island, has and it is still the only immigrant rights day labor organization open on-site. We currently have our office flooded with phone calls from workers asking what is going on with the site safety training, and some even still waiting for their SST card. Some are getting impatient and are upset too. So imagine currently who is the one that's getting the backlash, right? It's me, it's my organization, despite having no control over this situation. While we are in agreement with the extension, this also gives us the opportunity to now have a conversation of what can be done by SBS to provide assistance. It is easy to say that there will be an extension, however, with no protocols or assistance in place, an extension means nothing. La Culmena currently hosts OSHA trainings at a nearby church, and the church has a huge space. But despite having a huge space, we can only host about 15 or 20 workers. Plus, we are the ones that need to pay for deep cleaning afterwards. Obviously, there can be a blended program where we can host half virtually and half on-site. However, we need guidance, because right now, La Culmena had to figure it out on their own on how to continue providing OSHA trainings on-site. And we can't foresee what the future holds with this pandemic, but we can put protocols now in place to ensure that we are prepared. The day labor organizations, just like mine, are training, can provide that training that is necessary for workers to be safe on the job, but we also need assistance in ensuring that all workers are connected to resources and the necessary tools. An extension allows us to plan ahead and give the space in case it needs to be amended. And La Culmena is looking forward to working with everyone here to ensure that we can provide protection to all workers, especially during these hard times. Thank you.
Thank you. This concludes our public testimony. If we've inadvertently forgotten to call on someone to testify, if you could raise your hand using the Zoom raise hand function, we'll hear from you now. All right. Seeing no one, we'll turn it over to Chair Carnegie to close the hearing.
Again, I want to thank you so much for this hearing. I think it's important that we, even during a pandemic, put safety as a priority, and this committee has committed to do that. I want to thank the bill's sponsors again. And I want to thank everybody who was able to testify here today. Hearing your voices is quintessential in making sure that we move forward as a more safe and more productive city and hold the industry accountable for making sure workers are safe. With that, this hearing of August 18th, 2020 is